Follow this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, March 10th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is live streamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Before we get started, I'd like to thank members of the public for attending the School Board Business Meeting to observe the work of the board tonight. We also like to appreciate those who are watching online. We appreciate the time you're taking to be here, and we hope you learned something. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. We have included for the Priority-Based Budget Reduction Process Updates, the first iteration of our Frequently Asked Questions document. That's now live on the website. We just completed it this afternoon and thought it was useful for board members. We'll be adding to this as time goes on. There are several gift agreements, a number of personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, a leave of absence, a resignation. We also have in Items for Individual Action, an addition of the 26-28 Achievement and Integration Plan. And Hope Langston from Instructional Services is here to talk about the submission of that plan. We do that every three years. And then we've also just updated the future meetings to highlight that we have postponed our meeting, our Priority-Based Budget Public Process, Public Input Meeting tomorrow night due to an error on my part, and have rescheduled that for April 3rd, and I'll go over that in that segment of the agenda. So that's the table file for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hillman. If there are no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, Jeff? Do I have a second? Amy, thank you. Moved by Jeff, seconded by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then, just as a reminder, please turn your mics on so we can record the votes correctly. Now move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. It looks like we do not have any one here today. Thank you, Kelly. Announcements and recognitions, Dr. Hillman.
We have quite a few this evening because we are now completed with our winter season, and we have a number of really points of pride to share with the community tonight. So congratulations to Callie Graber and Ella Pagel, who both claimed state titles at the Minnesota State High School League Wrestling Tournament. We also want to congratulate Zane Engels, who placed fourth, Keith Harner, and Owen Murphy, who both secured sixth-place finishes. So congratulations to state champions, Callie Graber and Ella Pagel, and again, a great season for our Northfield wrestlers. We also want to congratulate our boys hockey team, who played in, you know, one of the stellar tournaments across the country, the Minnesota State High School League Boys Hockey Tournament. They won the consolation championship, which is fifth place, so they lost their opening round playoff, and then they won their next two games, beating two very competitive teams in Mata Medei and Northern Lakes. And then, for those of you who may have picked it up, The New York Times wrote an article this weekend about the Minnesota State High School League Tournament, and specifically about the phenomenon that's associated with the tournament called hockey hair. And Northfield High School's Will Cashin was photo-ed in, photo appeared in the piece. So if you haven't checked that out yet, there's a nice Northfield Raiders jersey in that article, and congratulations to Will for getting a little national recognition. We want to congratulate the Olympic Weightlifting Team. They sent 15 athletes to the state competition this past weekend, and they finished second as a team. Congratulations to Boy Swim and Dive, who finished second as a team at the state meet this past weekend. That's a real accomplishment. They've been in the mix for several years, and to get to second was, it's just, it's a very competitive meet. And we did have some state champions, so we want to congratulate Will Radetsky, who is the state champion in the 500-yard freestyle. Peyton Truman, Nick Shiglowski, Odenbergs, and Will Radetsky won the state title in the 200-yard relay. And Will Radetsky, Nick Shiglowski, Will Udelhoffen, and Josh Craby earned the championship title in the 400-meter relay, or the 400-yard relay, excuse me. So congratulations to our swimmers. That's an outstanding performance at the state meet. We also want to congratulate our Knowledge Bowl teams. Two of our three high school Knowledge Bowl teams have qualified for the state tournament and will compete at that event in April. Congratulations to Team Northfield Beige, which is Corey Demus, Eden Kudron, Jenny Diedeker, Theodore Murphy, and William Flannery, who took first place at the regions. And Team Northfield Pedestrian Yellow, Andy Elliott, Annika Reister, Audrey Hinman, Danica Sworom, and Steva Thorstensen, who took second place. So congratulations to our Northfield Raider Knowledge Bowl team, heading up north for the championship later in April. The Northfield High School Speech Team placed third at the Large School Division in Owatonna this past weekend. And this weekend, we will be hosting 27 teams at the Home Invitational at Northfield High School. That's this Saturday. Congratulations to Northfield High School Visual Arts Teacher Catherine Norrie, who has made the semifinalist round for the 2025 Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. She's one of 31 teachers who have advanced to the semifinals, and we expect to see the pool narrow to 10 finalists before the winner is announced during our recognition banquet on May 4th. We've been celebrating I Love to Read Month in February, and Greenville Park had a very successful I Love to Read Month. Pam Charlton, the AdSis Reading Intervention Teacher, led the organization of the activities at Greenville Park, and they hosted a guest author. Students had mystery passages, bingo games, and special dress-up days, and post-donated cereal for a special camping-themed reading day. So I Love to Read Month alive and well at Greenville Park. And then, we like to highlight community partnerships that we have as part of our strategic commitments. So on March 6th, St. Louis Physics Professor, led by Eric Haslett, brought hands-on activities to the Greenville Park Flux Lab. Grades one through, students in grades one through five participated in the activities during the day. So, as we said, lots, and I think there's at least one board member who also, do you want to talk a little bit about today's Day at the Capitol, or would you like me to do that?
I can start the description, and I'm sure you'll have more to say. But today was the MSBA, which is the Minnesota School Board Association, joint Day at the Capitol with MASA, which is the Minnesota Association of Super, uh, Sec-
School Administrators.
School Administrators. And we had seven people from Northfield ago. Superintendent Hillman and I went. I went representing the board. We had Laura Stelter from Arcadia. And then we also had the pleasure of having four students with us. You'll see some of the pictures there. We were able to visit with three different legislators. Again, this is Representative Roach right there in the blue sweater in the middle. And then, this is Senator Leeski. And then the other one is Representative Purcell. And we also learned a lot about how the legislature works. And then the cream on the top of the, or the cherry on the top of the sundae was, Governor Walz spoke to us, and there he is.
So we want to thank the students and Amy for attendance. It's a great day of, you know, for people to learn how the legislature works, to be able to actually teach people how to lobby and how to articulate our needs and what we're looking for to the state legislature. And I think I asked all the student participants at the end of the day, you know, real takeaways. And I think their takeaway is something that many first-time visitors to the Capitol come away with. Several of them said to me, I was really, I was surprised that regardless of the person, they listened, right? And so I think sometimes there's this perception, you know, at the Capitol, that people don't listen to each other, but our students were impressed that regardless of the circumstance. And there was even some disagreement a little bit on some of the positions, and it just went to show that you can have positive dialogue regardless of your outlook. And I think it was a really great day of learning for us as leaders and for our students as leaders in their development as well. So we appreciate everybody who had a chance to go today. We thank MSBA and MASA for putting that on every year. Those are your announcements that I have for this evening.
And maybe just a note to add to that, advocacy doesn't happen only at the Capitol. I was fortunate to join Saturday's Legislative Action Committee call, and there were 17 people on that, which is great to see. And now it's being community-run as well. Is that correct?
This was our first, yeah, this was our first weekend where we had a community facilitator, something we've been working on for some time, having people from the community step up, you know, to help lead that Legislative Action Committee. Of course, it's a work in progress, but we had some great work there on Saturday.
That's great to see. Do other board members have any announcements? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to items for discussions and reports. First up is Item A, Priority-Based Budget Reduction Process Updates. Superintendent Hillman and Director of Finance Val Merzendorf will update the board about the Priority-Based Budget Reduction Process.
So just, if board members will just endure me for just a moment, just to, again, people come to this conversation at different times, so I just want to do a very brief review of why we're here and what we have done so far. So as Val presented, starting talking about this in December, and then very clearly in January with the amount of reductions, we are looking to make a $6 million reduction for next year. The reasons that we are looking at these reductions are three areas, declining enrollment. And so, as you know, we're looking at incremental declining enrollment. We heard this at the Capitol today a number of times. It is not just Northfield who is, are experiencing these reductions. In fact, they asked the entire room of participants, and I think it's hard to say, Amy, well over half the hands went up, you know, of different districts making reductions. And throughout the day, we heard about the demographic reports about declining enrollment, not just here but across the country. So in Northfield, we're expecting a 0.93% decrease per year for the foreseeable future in enrollment. A lot of that is due to lower birth rates. Bryce County, 12% reduction in birth rates, birth rate in the last six years. We also know housing in this area is a real challenge, with only 28 single-family homes for sale in the 178-square-mile school district. And of course, when 70% of your revenue comes from the state, and around 70% of that is tied to enrollment-based formulas, that's one of the challenges we have with revenue. We also heard a lot today at the Capitol as well about unfunded and underfunded state and federal mandates, the largest of which is our Special Education Cross-Subsidy. That's the amount of general fund money that we spend on required, and I would argue morally imperative services to students with disabilities. In Northfield, we spend around $4.3 million of our general fund to subsidize those really important services. It just, it still means we have to spend general fund money to make those happen. We also know there's a number of other mandates that have come down from the state in the last couple of years that are also not reimbursed. And we've shared some of those with the past, things like, you know, the Summer Unemployment Program that has been fully funded. We're hopeful that the legislature might fund that again, but if they don't, that's another $217,000 that would come from our general fund, a state-required family medical leave. And again, we're not making value judgments on these. We're simply being very straight up about how much it would cost us. We anticipate, you know, that would cost us around $174,000. The TRA payroll tax increase, another $225,000. And as we've shared before, we learned that we'll have some less state aid in terms of transportation next year as well. And so that's another $160,000-$70,000 increase over a couple of years to our general fund cross-subsidy. We also know that state funding has been improved, but it has not been made up for decades. We know that the state would have to increase the per-pupil formula by $1,364 to match the same buying power that the formula had 20 years ago. We just want to remind people too that Minnesota has a very highly regulated system of school finance. And so a couple of questions that we often get, you know, are around the bond reform in November. Remember that bond referendum proceeds go into our debt service account, and the debt service account is solely for paying off the mortgage, if you will, that the voters approved in November. And so that, those funds cannot be used for anything else. And as the board knows, we anticipate it will actually have a positive impact on our operating budget down the line, more efficient building, et cetera. Also, an attractive place to continue to recruit families as housing does open up. How did we do this? We did bring together budget reduction teams, a community-based, priority-based budget reduction. We had over 80 people participate. That included parents, community members, without students, administrators, high school students participating, and we had a number of staff members as well. And anybody who completed an interest form was placed on a team. And so we expected those folks to work productively together, to identify reduction areas within their team using the district priorities and other relevant considerations. And we wanted them to provide feedback and recommendations. And they did their work over three meetings, and they did generate a list of recommended reductions. And those recommended reductions were released to the public last week. And so we are starting the next phase of this process, which is the community engagement process. And so we are expecting, I would hope that we would hear from the public about this. My plan here tonight is just to give a very high-level overview of the different packages. And there's 80-some items in this list, so I'm not going to go through each one of them. Board members saw an advanced copy of it before it was released to the public, and then you've had it for several days now. We will just go through a few of them, and then we'll be happy to, you know, take any feedback or questions that people might have and plan out the rest of the process. We'd have a couple of administrators here tonight who could assist with any questions, should that be necessary. And again, we're at the beginning of this, so we expect that there's going to be more detailed questions coming down the line. So I'll just roll through, and before I roll through those, I just want to point out one more time that we had originally scheduled our Public Input Session for tomorrow night. And I apologize, it was an error on my part. We did not see the conflict that was with the state or the township meetings, and we apologize, I apologize for that. We have practiced, as soon as we, as soon as we understood that there was a conflict, we promptly corrected it, communicated it. And again, I apologize for that issue. And all I know how to do is when you make a mistake, own it, and then reschedule and say what's next. So April 3rd will give people more time to really understand what the reductions are. So we have rescheduled that Public Input Meeting for April 3rd, and we're going to do that at the middle school instead of the high school. So as you'll see, Activities Package, what you'll see is there's some things around increase in fees, some reduction in the shuttle service from all year to just the winter season only. You'll see throughout the packages that, for a long time, we've been able to pass, or we've been able to pay the credit card fees rather than having the users pay the credit card fees. Of course, as you know, many different places are having people who use their credit card cover the service fee, so you're going to see that throughout several packages. There are things that range in this package from, you know, going to all digital programming, programs rather than paper programs, to increased adult ticket price sales, you know, things like increasing fees for family passes or increasing the cap for activity fees. And so, and there's also a number of positions that you'll see that had been budgeted for, but we just had seen a few years in a row where they didn't go. And so we try to keep those in the budget. Sometimes you'll have a program that will not run one year but might run the next, but we've got several pieces here that the Activities Team looked at and said, "These are things that we should officially eliminate this time because they have not been filled in some time." So the Activities Package, again, every budget area had a target, and all of them hit their target. So you'll see the next area is the District Services. And again, you'll see a range of things here from eliminating full-time substitutes, the full-time substitute positions, looking at some restructuring of departments and duties due to some retirements in those areas, looking at making sure that we're doing all of the chargebacks that we can do to child nutrition and community education. We are able to charge those funds when they are taking advantage of things that we might have another segment of the public pay for. So for example, child nutrition, we can charge part of our electricity bill to them, and just ensuring that all of those kinds of things are appropriately charged to those accounts. And you'll see a handful, there's some reduction in cellphone reimbursement stipends. Some people have asked about that. So we have a number of employees who we have identified as needing a cellphone to be able to complete their job. This typically means that we need to be able to contact them off-campus or outside of school hours. And so employees in that category have a choice. They can take a school-issued cellphone, or they can have a cellphone reimbursement for their personal cellphone, or recommending a reduction in that personal cellphone reimbursement. Number of other, I'm not going to read through all of them, just giving a few items in each one. The Elementary Package looks at specifically the declining enrollment related to the elementary schools where it's more pronounced. They've also increased the class-size target, so it's recommending a reduction of nine general education classroom teachers. When you reduce general education classroom sections, the specialist time that goes along with that also can be reduced in proportion because if there are fewer classrooms, that means that there's a need for fewer specialist sections, so that goes in tandem. And then, again, you'll see that there's some reducing of some, a couple, or a small budget area, and then a small amount of general education assistance. And again, you see that cellphone stipend piece as well. In the Secondary Package, you will begin to see things like reducing the high school licensed teachers by up to 3.6 FTE. And those departments are not yet known because they're going through that registration process right now. And the high school schedule has long been built on what are the courses that students are registering for. So those specific departmental areas will become apparent in the next couple of weeks, and we'll make sure that we communicate that. You'll also notice that there's some discussion about the six-period day at the middle school. That's something we discussed a couple of years ago. That committee recommended bringing it back, and I do have Mr. Gellino here. I know there's been some questions about that, so he can answer some general questions about potential six-period day. You'll see that, looking to go back to pre-pandemic numbers in the terms of our counselor, counselor team at the middle school and high school by eliminating one of the four positions at the high school and one of the three positions at the middle school, some administrative adjustments in terms of replacing a high school assistant principal with a dean of students, which is a teacher on special assignment with an additional 10 days beyond the teacher contract, and some additional compensation for coordinating advanced placement. You'll see some other position eliminations. You'll see some reductions in consumable supply budgets. And then again, some other hours, some changing in some hours in some positions, some increasing in some fees. And again, you'll see that cellphone reimbursement stipend again. When we take a look at the Special Services Package, which is the fifth package, in terms of, there's a few things. So we've had some vacant educational assistant positions. And so the concept is, do we eliminate, for every three of those positions that we would eliminate, replacing it with a teacher, which we have had some really good luck in getting some quality special education teacher applications. And so the concept is you actually save a little bit of money and provide a different kind of service for those vacant positions. Again, looking at some, eliminating some additional special education assistant positions, looking at some reduction of some other positions as well. One of these is looking at restructuring our Health Services Department. Currently, we have seven licensed nurses in the district, one licensed school nurse, and six other licensed nurses, looking at the six licensed nurses that are in school buildings, and replacing half of them with a health aide that would be in tandem with one of the building nurses. You'll again see some reduction in some time that would, is usually allotted during PLC time for educational assistance, some professional development reduction. You'll see a reduction in an EL teacher. While we will still be able to remain within the alignment in state student-to-staff ratio guidelines, you know, there's some pieces about using underutilized special education web-based subscriptions. And so again, what you'll see there is, with the Special Services Package, they achieved their target of $1 million. So each, each package was given a particular target. And again, as we've shared before, those were proportional generally to the, generally proportional to the spaces or the budgets that they have in the regular year. So as the reduction was about the same amount as what their current share of the budget is, special services is a little different because of maintenance of effort. And all of these reductions are painful. Everything that's on this list means something to someone. So we have to make these reductions because it's the responsible thing to do for the future of the school district. We have to serve both the students who are here now, but also ensure that we have the resources to continue serving students well into the future. Again, we're not alone in doing this. I do want to compliment the five teams. They were well facilitated. The people from the community had really excellent feedback and some excellent questions, you know, over the three sessions. We surveyed members of the committees after every one of the meetings. I've shared that data with you. Overall, on balance, people felt that they were, it was really a participatory process, that what they brought to the table was valued. And while, of course, everyone's suggestions weren't incorporated, they gave the process very positive reviews. And two things can be true at the same time, right? We can feel satisfied with the process that we're using to bring the community together, to make these very difficult decisions, and we can dislike the outcomes. That can also be true. So there is nothing about this that is good. Everything on this list means something to someone, and we will have people who share their individual perspectives. And that's where, as a board, we need you to see the recommendations. Their recommendations for a reason. You have the final say. As we enter into this community phase of feedback, you're going to hear things from people, which is what I would expect you would. And then it's up to you to weigh and measure what those final reductions are. So I tried to be as efficient as I could there. I highlighted them. I'll be clear, I, ones that I didn't go over, there's no, there was no reason that I picked some versus others. I tried to give a representative description of the items that are listed in the budget reduction documents, all published on our website and has been sent to families. So with that, I would just pause. I would certainly entertain any questions that people have about the process, about where we're going from here. If there are specific items that you have about things on the list, we'll do our best to answer them for you tonight. If we can't, we will certainly get back to you. We published the FAQ this afternoon. You have the FAQ in your, in the table file as well. As questions come up, if they're more routine, we'll certainly add them to the FAQ. But I just appreciate the board's support as we move through this because this is difficult for our community and as elected officials, you know, your job to be able to weigh and measure all these things is really important. We want to give you a quality set of recommendations that really came from a community-based, priority-based budget reduction team.
Thank you, Dr. Hillman. Before I open up for questions, just a couple of quick comments. I too want to reinforce the gratitude from the board to the community members. 80 stakeholders who played a role in this. This is obviously a very difficult process, and for them to give up three days to help set the future for our district is vitally important, and I hope we hear many more voices here in the coming weeks. I do want to also mention, Dr. Hillman mentioned at the end, in today's table file, we did have that FAQ. I found that incredibly helpful to answer some of the more high-level questions about some of these changes. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that today, I know I just gave them this afternoon, or maybe late this morning, please take a look at that. This is a high-level discussion at this point. This is the first time we're seeing this. It's still fresh in our minds. That doesn't mean don't ask questions, of course, but know that we do have some time here to work through these problems. We don't have to solve everything tonight. I do appreciate Mr. Gellino being here because I know there's some curiosity to understand a little bit more about the proposed change. So maybe we'll wait on you and hear from the board first, see what comes up. So, board members, any questions? Amy?
Well, actually, that was a perfect segue to my question because we have Principal Gellino here, and I know there's going to be a lot of community conversation about going from six periods to, seven periods to six periods at the middle school. And I just thought, maybe you could do a short introduction as to what your thinking is, what do you see the advantages and the disadvantages to the change?
Sure. You can come up now, that's fine.
Thank you for inviting me, Dr. Hillman. I think it's vitally important that the board understands the six-period day and the why behind it. So I'm glad I could be here today. So with the target, as you saw in there for the Secondary Package, the middle school's piece of that ended up landing at $600,000. And in order to do that, you couldn't just cut budgets, although that is one of the proposals, is that I did reduce budgets. The proposal states a reduction of 30% of all department budgets, but that doesn't get too close. So the best way for me to explain seven versus a six-period and why the need to go to a six-period is this. Is that in a seven-period day, in order for us to make roughly $200,000 worth of budget reductions or make that proposal and stay in a seven-period day, what that would be doing is taking two spots in a student's schedule and removing a class. Students already have either a study hall every day or every other day at a minimum on their schedule, and that would give them an additional study hall, if not for some students, additional two. So you would have students having two study halls, even maybe two-plus study halls throughout a day, which is, to me, not a good use of our resources or a good use of our students' time. That's too much time for students to be out of the academics in there. So by going to a six-period day, it actually obviously reduces by one hour. The study halls themselves would kind of just be eliminated. So the next question that does come up is, well, why not just keep the same classes and just eliminate the study halls? And the, the very simple answer to that is, study halls are free. That's part of a teacher contract, so just by eliminating a study hall gives you zero savings. So if that still doesn't get us to our target or even make progress towards the target, you have to remove classes in a student's schedule, not study halls, to get to that target that we're looking for. So by doing that, if you'll see in there, is there was a, our seventh-grade health, which was a class that we added a fair number of years ago as a value add, and we value that. But in order to go to a six-period day, we needed a space to allow for more elective choices. So that's why that piece was there, to kind of take that out of the schedule, to open up a space in a seventh-grade schedule. And then you see the other remaining reduction, as far as classroom goes, is a 0.6 FTE reduction. And that very simply is because, in a six-period day, again, if we keep every, most of our electives right now are every other day. And if we keep them every other day, again, there's no savings. You have, you have to make students have less choice or less classes. In order to do that, things such as musics have to be every day. Our Copernios Program, seven, eighth grades every day, but now in sixth grade it'd be every day. Any art class would be every day versus every other day. And that limits now that space, which then would, the plan is, or the proposal is, is that would get us to that reduction that we need to be able to meet that target. is that would get us to that reduction that we need to be able to meet that target.
So just as a follow-up question, how does that work with FTEs? If you could just explain clearly how many FTEs you'd lose through going to a six-period day?
It would be 1.6 FTE.
Thank you.
Ben, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Gellino. And if I remember correctly from the last time we had this discussion, so then in terms of electives, right, it's either art or music or, I guess, you get students who get a choice of two or one?
They get to pick one. So there's, right, there is a class opposite Phi Ed in each of the grades. In sixth grade, it's opposite launch, which is from the last time we did the budget reduction, when we went to language arts in sixth grade. We reduced by one reading FTE. But we kept launch as a key, a key component to start building skills, soft skills for our sixth grade students to kind of prepare them for the rest of their journey. And seventh grade, it's currently family and consumer science. And eighth grade, it's currently STEM. That's after. Those are the three exceptions to every other day because it's opposite PE that is every other day. So it needs a partner to basically fill one spot.
Gotcha, okay. And that was launch, not lunch?
It is launch.
I thought I heard the first time. So then, music or art would be an option. Student had to pick one and stick with that for the year? Is that kind of the way that?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's true of six, seven, or eight?
Correct. And amistades as well.
And when you say that, Dr. Hillman, you mean that's also an elective? So if somebody chooses amistades, then they're choosing that in lieu of?
That is correct. There's one spot, so you have required classes, five spots of required classes, which leaves you one opening. And since classes are every day, you have a choice between a music, amistades if you were in the Copernios program, or an art class.
Thanks.
Other questions? Jeff?
Question, I know in last time we looked at this, we went to the seven and then ended up sticking, I mean, sticking with the seven. My thought is, what has changed or not changed in view of parent positions? And your comments on that?
The number one change is the size of the dollar amount. If not, if having to stay in seven-period day, to be quite frank, I, I can't see anywhere possible to get to the target that we need without going to a six-period day. The extreme example I gave to our staff is you could reduce, Mr. O'Keefe is assistant principal myself, and you're still not there. And you don't have a single administrator. So it's, you, it's a very large cut that you have to go, you have to take it from classrooms. Unfortunately, no one likes to do that. I'm saddened to even have to say that, but that is the reality.
And I think, Jeff, your question on parent feedback, you know, that's really what we're starting, right? When we shared those potential reductions, you know, with the community last week, that kicks off really the community feedback part. So I think we're starting to see some feedback from parents about that. And I expect that we'll see more. So the parent feedback is, I think, really just kicking off right now because we just let people know what the specific recommendations were last week. So I'd anticipate we'll be getting a lot more parent feedback in the next six weeks here.
I apologize, I misunderstood your question.
Amy, I get, we'll have questions.
Yeah, just a quick question. What happens to industrial technology and family and consumer sciences?
Right now, they are, they would stay the same, opposite PE, but I put an asterisk by that because we're doing registration. So it is the final decision on what that will look like. Won't happen until after our registration's done.
Thank you.
Jenny?
Thanks, Cory. So, do you, so you said, you know, the students would be able to pick between an art or a music?
Correct.
And so currently, I know that we have multiple art selections at the middle school and multiple music selections. So can you run down a list of what they would be able to choose from now? I mean, if it were to go to be reduced in that way?
Yep, so the music stays the same. It's a choice. They have a choice of choir, band, and orchestra. Art is going to have to do a change because of a, some state art requirements, which doesn't allow us to offer multiple individual classes. They will have to be able to meet those standards within one class. So they'll have to do units of study to reach those. So we will have to work with the art department on what that will exactly look like. But so the, for example, we have a media art class right now. If you just told a media art class as an option, that leaves out the visual arts. It leaves out the other, some of the other requirements that happen. So you have to meld them together in one class to make that work.
So you're saying though, that, because I, I know it seems like the students really enjoy all of the different art selections?
Correct.
Right now? And, which is probably why you continue them year to year. So, but what you're saying is that you could technically, and still stick with the state standards, take parts of each, each different art section and incorporate them all into one? So the students would still be able to experience each of the arts?
That is correct. So it'd be more of a, like an exploratory, kind of as a basic way of explaining it. So you get some media art, you get some visual arts, you may get some pottery, you may get a little bit of everything within a class.
Okay, because I, I know this is already, seems like it's going to make a lot of families sad, knowing that a lot of these different art selections are going to be removed. So when would people be able to get a better understanding of really how that would work in all of the different art sections that you're saying would be incorporated? Because I, I mean, I think I have an understanding of it, but I can see that others may not. So when and how would they get that visual of what it would be included?
I think the first thing that processes actually with all of you is when the proposals actually voted on and acted on. So we know exactly what the schedule's going to look like in the end. And then it's a matter of sitting down with our teachers and saying, okay, here's what you have for your state requirements. How can we make this look in seventh and eighth and sixth grade?
And then going along with that, so we have, we also have more than one art teacher?
Correct.
And so would that, would, would those positions all remain? Or would they be reduced in this, specifically in the art department?
Again, that will be a little bit dependent on our registration and what that's going to ultimately look like.
But, but there is a potential for those positions to be reduced only in the arts department?
As an elective class, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on the side? Maggie?
Thank you. So I know that they're called electives, but are there standards for students to take arts classes in their middle school years? Are they required to take something like art or music or?
Yeah, so the state has five areas in the, it's called, there's these art requirements. And art is, wish they had a different word for that because art doesn't necessarily mean an art class. It actually is very specific in what the state says. It can be, those five areas can be in a different class. For example, just an extreme case, a Phi Ed class, one of the, the areas is dance. So we have a dance unit in Phi Ed. So if they really wanted to dig into the standards of dance and make sure they hit all, I think there's 17 standards there, technically you could cover that in a Phi Ed class. So just when, even when I say art requirements, it doesn't necessarily mean an art class. So is it required that they take an art class? Hypothetically, probably not, but realistically, you want as many students to take that because I think that'd be a good place for that. But is it required that everyone takes an art class? No.
It's about offering?
It's about, you have to offer at least three of the five areas, and then students have to take two. And music is one of them, is one of those areas as well.
So if a student has to take two, what if they, they go in in sixth grade and they only take orchestra all three years? Are they not receiving the other option then?
And that's the part that we now have to look at. Now that the, the state gave us these requirements la, last year, I believe, we have to look and say, okay, where are these with our new schedule? Where do these fit? And that's why I said it's kind of hard to kind of wrap your brain around the fact that even though it's called an art requirement, it doesn't mean an art class. So there are some options within our schedule that you can meet some of those requirements without actually being in an art class. So that, that's the work we have to do once the schedule's kind of laid out.
Great, I have one more question. Can you talk about why offering quarter classes or semester classes wouldn't provide us the savings? Maybe it's the same as the other question you answered, but I'm curious about that.
No, that's okay. Because I, I literally, because some other, Hope actually did some work with the Big Nine, and there's some of them that do some quarter classes or semester classes. So I'm, I did map it out. And it actually costs us more money. Part of the thing, our, here in Northfield with the last budget reductions, we've narrowed down the middle school schedule to, for lack of better words, bare bones. So we really have nowhere else to go. And where these other districts, if we were going to go to a quarter or a semester class with some of these, we actually, not only do we not save money, we, it actually costs us money to do it.
Ben, another question?
Can you just get into the weeds with me on that?
I will try.
Because I'm just curious, because it seems like logically, right? Somebody could say, well, half the year you take music and a half the year you take art, right? So you divide, so?
But now you have two adults.
Right, so it's, it's about having the right position and the right mix of enrollment between those two semesters. Is that essentially where, walk me through sort of why it costs more?
It's because you're not reducing the .6 FTE.
Correct. Yeah.
I had the same question, thinking about the half-day all-year versus the same day, one day, or every day all-year. But it's about the .6.
It's about the .6.
It's a $75,000 saving off the top.
Right, and Cory is smarter than me, but some days, but I don't give him that every day. But, so walk me through how that doesn't save us the .6. Connect the dots for me.
If it, so if you have, if I had in seventh grade and I did two, say, two quarter classes, like you had Phi Ed for half a year, a semester, so it gives me a half a slot left. And I did two quarter classes with that. There's a maroon and gold day schedule with that. So it's really, even though it's a quarter, it's equivalent actually to a semester with each one. Then by the time, if you want to get all the students through that, you're looking at roughly, I think it's about .5 FTE or something like that. I don't have it off the top of my head. But then times three, because you have to do it for all three grade levels. And then what that doesn't do is now you've moved the things that we're currently calling electives into a required slot, and I have nothing now less, I have to now pay for something to fill that other spot. If you put it down in that last spot and you're doing quarter again, instead of one class, one teacher, one FTE covering that spot, you're now having multiple people have to cover that spot. So if you do it for a quarter, you're just shifting kids.
And I think one of the things that we can do, you know, the, the fact is that these are really great questions. And this is why we're asking this well ahead of your decision point. I did ask Greg to come this evening. He has not had a chance to give us anything in writing. So what I'd ask is that, what, we've heard some really good questions about how does different scheduling options work? Well, if, if it's okay, we'll have Greg put some of those things in writing and, and show you some examples. And there are some things that some, some districts think about differently with scheduling. And that might be something that we also have to consider within the construct of a, of a six-period day. But the truth is, is that, for example, in the arts section, if you're, if you were to offer a quarter of media art, a quarter of visual arts, et cetera, you could accomplish the same thing in the year-long class just by dividing out what are the units of study that you have, right? So if you're hitting all of them, there's, there's a number of ways that you can accomplish those things. And there's nothing about this that is easy, right? There's nothing about the, there's, the truth is, our middle school students, who have enjoyed a tremendous amount of choice in the past, are going to have less choice. And so in, in terms of regardless of how we look to hit that target, right? There's obviously going to be some less choice in that mix, given the budget targets that we have. And so I, I think the key part is, you know, coming back to the why, why are we here and where we're at? And I think Greg can put together and map it out for you so that you can see on paper why a certain schedule is more efficient from a cost perspective than another. So Greg's been doing scheduling at a middle school for how long now?
Twenty-seven years.
So I think, you know, he has a number of pieces that I think will be helpful, not only to the board, but to the community as we move ahead. We were able to, we were able to avoid having to do this in the last round of reductions, but this is an area that seems to be one of the logical places for us to go, given the circumstances. So I, Greg can certainly take more questions, but for some of those real detailed pieces, I think it's probably better for everybody for us to have that on paper for you and get that to you well ahead of the next meeting. Does, can everybody live with that? I just, I think that's a good space for us to be to see it mapped out.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that we don't want to make you dance and do math up there for me. But, but I do think it's important because I think these are some of the logical questions.
Absolutely.
Parents will, you know, so why not split the year? You know, and I think by being able to put that on the FAQ site and really show the math and, you know, show why that doesn't solve the problem will be helpful. Not only to me, but I think people that will logically ask that as a question.
Thank you very much. And I do think this is also a good point to, I think this is a good illustration of the challenges that we have when we want to create a locally controlled schedule, when the state requirements tell us we have to do certain things in so many areas, right? So those, those state requirements, those mandates are pieces that reduce the local flexibility that we have to make some of these choices that we would deem logical, but we still need to make sure that we're following, you know, the state requirements to the best of our abilities. So I do think this is a good example of, many times, and we're going to face this at the high school, right, in the next couple of years, very few people would disagree that the new requirement for personal finance is, is a, every, few people would disagree that's a great thing. It's a very good thing, right? That's going to be one less elective that high school students get to take because the, what we tell legislators is the more that you require, the less choice that students have. And this is an excellent example of that.
Last thought, Ben?
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll use my last question. But, and just to follow on what Maggie was asking, you know, in terms of what the art standards and requirements are, so the requirement to offer, but help me understand, so if somebody takes amistades, are they, is there art requirement for the student as well? So that they'll have to decide at least one of those three years they don't take amistades? Is that essentially kind of what we're, what we're looking at?
No, so what we're, that's the work that we have to do now to say, okay, are, where can we put some of those standards in classes that all students take? So that they, a student in amistades, or a student in orchestra, or a band, or choir, still can meet that requirement. It just won't, because it's, it doesn't fit in the musics or amistades. So we have to find where else it could fit.
And when we say that requirement, we're referring to?
One of those, two of the five areas, which is?
The five, okay.
Theater, dance, visual, media art, and I missed my music, thank you.
Okay, gotcha. So it doesn't have to live in that elective space?
It does not.
It can live some, you know, required space?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful.
And I think, I think the other part of this is when you're, you're going through a reduction process like this, you know, many of, there, there are things that are on this list that are cut and dry, right? We're going to reduce this budget by, but there are some pieces that are more complex and will take more time to have the full plan. And so that is part of this process is that, as, as Greg said, in order to be able to, if you're really going to have a participatory process, which we do, people are going to bring ideas to the table where by the time, we can't wait until there's a complete plan to release the potential reduction list, right? So there's a lot of things in here that are, yep. The credit card fee, that's a very cut and dry. Either you do it or you don't, right? There are some other things that will require some additional work and additional flushing out. And as you know, we have a history of making sure we flush those things out for you. Just, there will be a handful of those things that we, we wish we had a complete picture for you right now, but we just don't, and we're not going to try to make it up, right? We're going to tell you what we know, we're going to tell you what we don't know, and then we'll take sequential steps to solve the problems in front of us.
I have a final thought or question from Jenny, then I'll go to Amy.
Okay, so the, the three music classes are remaining. And so, so there's not less choice there, but how many music classes are they able to take right now?
They can actually take two.
They can take two? So, so they could have two music classes every day of the?
No, that, currently our music classes are every other day, which is why they can take two. When the sixth period day, they can only pick one because it is every day.
Okay, so then in moving to the other scheduling procedure, they, they will still have, be able to take two of the music choices?
They will not. They can only pick?
Take one of the three.
One of the three.
Okay, so those students that are in two, band and choir, let's say, have to?
They have to choose.
One or the other.
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think they'll be part of the follow-up is laying this out for us as well.
Correct.
Amy?
Well, thank you for the presentation. That discussion you just had was something we were excited about last time that people, the students would able to, be able to take two. And it's, I'm sorry to hear that it would revert back. I'm sorry to hear that it would revert back. This is a difficult time, but I want to know from you, as you think about the possibilities of a six-period schedule, what excites you? What advantages are to it? There must be something moving forward that will benefit our students.
I'm a firm believer that with change, there's opportunity. So I do think that there will be opportunity within our schedule. I think there'll be opportunity even with with the art requirements, to be putting in maybe some other courses that could give them a, maybe a different look than they've had in the past. I think we have, as part of the six-period day, there is a 20, 27-minute block of time that I'll call like a flex study hall. So it's not a study hall every day, but it may be at the morning, it may be in the middle of the day to give kids a break. It gives us an opportunity to give students an extra minute passing time we've been really seriously considering, so they can have a little bit of, a little bit more time to catch their breath, use the bathroom, socialize a little bit before going back into class. I think we should be able to, the plan is still keeping their lunches grade pure, which is important to our students. They, many years ago, went back to that. They've verbalized to us that it's an important piece to their school day. They want to eat with their same-grade friends, so we can keep that. So I think there's, this is hard, and change is hard, but I, in the end, I'm, I am excited that, okay, this can bring some, also some opportunities for us.
Greg, appreciate the clarification on some of those things. I do have one request for you, a question, and maybe a question for Dr. Hillman. So you had mentioned the new requirements from 2023 relate to the five disciplines of art from the state. You had mentioned as an extreme example, dancing and PE.
Right.
When you report back to us with some additional information, could you provide some examples of what would actually qualify that aren't considered, in your words, extreme?
Sure.
We have a better idea of what could potentially fill those spaces?
I can, yeah, I can come back with some areas of thought that we, some content areas that we're, at least would want to explore, that maybe they could take on some of those.
Okay. And then this might be somewhat semantics, but, you know, looking at the 1.6 FTE, the $200,000 savings, is that what's driving the schedule change? Because you had electives you could pull out to get to the six periods? Or was the idea of six periods is what drove you to those, selection of those 1.6 FTE? I'm looking at the carton of the horse here.
Yeah.
What's driving what?
It's the, the mount drove us to this, drove to the six-period day, that we, in a seven-period day, not being able to get to our target. So it had to go to six-period day, and then the, making sure the six-period day works with, including with hitting the target, then came to the elective piece, because everything else is a required class.
All right, thank you. Then a final question, maybe for Dr. Hillman, maybe Mr. Jellino. If we don't meet those requirements, let's say, worst-case scenario, for some reason, next year we go to six-period day, and we don't meet this art requirement, what happens to the district? Is there any understanding of, is it a penalty? Is it a slap in the hand?
I actually don't know that answer, but I can tell you that with Hope's research, that the whole big nine is struggling with this. We're not alone.
Okay.
And I think we will, we will find a way, right?
Certainly, I would expect so, but I'm curious, in the event, for some reason.
Yeah, if you're asking if there is a financial penalty, I'm not aware of any of those kinds of things, but that's not our focus. Our focus is how do we make, make what we are expected to do by the state work within the schedule that we would have presented.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
Do board members have other questions about what's in front of us? We're going to let you free. Jenny?
Thanks. I have a question about the elementary package now. So regarding item, line item 42, reduce 9.0 FTE general ed classroom teachers. Would that be contemporary or compañeros sections?
Those would be contemporary sections.
Okay, so, so we have, we have, we have 15 compañeros sections?
That sounds right.
Total, and all 15 would remain?
Based on our projections right now, I guess.
We would remove nine contemporary?
Correct. And that's based on the class size calculations. So in those sections, you would see the class sizes, you're right, we're talking about the contemporary, the non-compañero sections, and we're resetting what the class size targets are for those areas. So that is, part of it is just the overall general reduction in the student numbers, and then resetting what our class size divisor is for those areas. So they would be nine contemporary sections.
So then we're going to be severely increasing our class sizes for contemporary, but the compañeros will remain low?
It depends on the compañeros section. You're right, there's some that would remain low, you know, some that would be low. There are some that have more students, you know, in those compañeros sections than others. So it depends on the, it depends on the circumstance. We have some, I think that there are likely some sections that would be close to what that divisor is. I'd have to look at those class sections, but you're right, there would be some that would be lower than what those targets would be in contemporary.
Because the, in our district-wide priority or prioritization, the class sizes for elementary was listed three times as the highest importance, and compañeros was listed zero times. So I'm wondering, why, if that's such a big priority, why is there a discrepancy? Why are we not adhering to those priorities?
So there was discussion about those class size priorities in the elementary, and Val can help me out with this. She was also, we moved from, from section, or from team to team. And my understanding is that what they looked at, when we looked at these class size sections, is that they did increase. They, remember, we are seeing some of the more declining enrollment first begin at the elementary. And we do also know that we had educators from other districts, you know, on that team, who, when they saw even these increased divisors, that they were favorable compared to several other districts. That's in terms of when they weigh all of those different pieces out, this is what the recommendation was from that group. Did you have anything to add?
Val, you have something? I was just going to say, I gave them kind of a sandbox projection model to play with, and even with their increased class sizes that they're recommending, the difference between contemporary and compañeros averages one to maybe one and a half students per, between, between two. So the, I think on average, they'll be similar, and I don't anticipate it being different than it is now, where there are some classes in compañeros that are pretty small, and that's just a product of, you know, the students that chose to take it, and there's some attrition throughout the years, but some of them are actually larger than the contemporary. And so I think that variability will continue to happen, but when we look at it holistically across the system, it's a pretty small difference on average. According to the production model that we're playing with, which obviously we'll see what happens when all the students actually show up next year, but in terms of what we forecasted with the current students and the current compañeros classes, it's not a significant difference between the two.
Okay, thank you.
Ben, do you have a question about this topic?
Okay. Wait, just by range, do you know roughly kind of what the range is, small to large, for compañeros and the contemporary, under the nine FTE reduction?
So the, I want to make sure I'm on the right model. So when I look, the average contemporary size for Bridgewater would be 23.7, and compañeros is 22.2, just for an example. Spring Creek has the largest variance. They're at 22.2 and 20.2 for compañeros. And then average, oh, we should fix that. K3 is, so if we look across all three, like 22.7, and 4.5 is 23.2. So it obviously varies by building. And again, it's taking current compañeros numbers and rolling them forward, assuming they would stay the same. Also just taking the current enrollment and rolling it forward and assuming it'll be the same, which isn't a given, but overall, I think they were trying to balance out as much as they could without making it seem very dramatic. So.
And are there separate entry paths to the compañeros program? I don't remember the specifics. I mean, so when somebody comes in, do they start kindergarten, and then once you start, you can't, if I was in third grade and I wanted to join compañeros, would that be an option?
So the compañeros program begins in first grade.
First grade, thank you.
And then there are some on, there are some pathways to join the program, you know, throughout. Typically, I would say, third grade is likely the latest that I've ever seen, and there would be some determining factors there about previous experience with language.
Sure.
You know, things like that. But I do know that they do add, it's not a ton, to be very clear, it's, it's very few, but there are pathways to be able to join compañeros after first grade, but typically you wouldn't see anything after third grade, and that third grade entry point is probably the smallest.
But it would be safe to say that somebody entering a family that prioritized smaller class sizes, if those in fact existed within compañeros, would have an option to, to look at that as one variable in their decision-making process?
Yeah, I suppose that could be, I mean, again, I would say up until third grade at the latest.
So I took a look at the enrollment report in today's packet, and certainly, the administration should manage how this is doled out next year, but I just want to point out to Greenville this year, so, to Jenny's question about kind of the compañeros versus contemporary. So if you look at second grade at Greenville, compañeros has 26 students in it, and of the, and this is a particularly large class size, so there's four other contemporary classes with 20 or fewer students. So in theory, those third graders next year, if you reduce that by one teacher, you'd have 24 kids in one class and 25 in each of the other two, and then the compañeros would have 26, if all things stay the same. Of course, we don't make that decision. Same with kindergarten. We have four classes that are averaging less than, they're averaging 18 students per class. If you assume a quarter of those go to compañeros, which seems to be the trend year after year, if you split down the two, you have 24 kindergartners, which I think is above what the new goal would be. But again, that's for staff and district administration to figure out. But there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of layers to it. I guess is my point of illustrating that. Other questions about this specific topic? Otherwise, do you have other pieces, Jenny? Please.
Just one, just one more thing to add to that before you move on. So I know that it all is depending too on registration at the time for first graders, anyway, starting first graders. And so if, if we don't see that quarter or so, as Corey mentioned, of students who choose compañeros, and let's say it's much different for this fall or the coming year, will one of those teachers, are they readily available to reposition to a contemporary classroom, Ben?
All of the elementary teachers are licensed in that area, so compañeros, there's not a specific license required for our compañeros classrooms. We look for another set of skills that would be there. So all of the teachers at the elementary schools are licensed to teach at the elementary level. Almost all of them now, quite a few of them have a K5 license. There's still some people of my vintage who got the one-six license years ago. But in, on principle, anybody at the elementary could teach any contemporary class.
Thank you.
As a reminder, again, first time we're seeing this, we'll have a chat a week. Thank you. As a reminder, this is the first time we're seeing it. We'll see this again April 3rd at the community meeting, April 14th and April 28th at the board meetings, and I trust we'll probably have a work session at some point.
Yes, we're working with board members to schedule that work session, likely April 7th, I think, is when we're looking at that.
Yeah. Do board members, any other board members have kind of some initial thoughts or questions that can help this process moving forward? Okay, Ben, you have one more?
Is that a circle back, different topic? Are we good to move on?
Yeah, please do.
You know, your day at the Capitol today, any kind of read on, I know the state budget kind of projection is not particularly great when we go out a few years, but any, any read on, you know, kind of what we might expect this session in terms of anything?
Well, I am known as an eternal optimist, and what I'll tell you is, we're getting nothing. In fact, what we're, I mean, I've been following the legislature for decades, and this is the first time that I heard today, people hoping for a target of zero, because they do believe that there are some committees that will get negative targets, which means they have to reduce the amount of money spent in those areas. Do I think that there's a chance for some things? Yes, I do think there's a chance for a handful of pieces, but what I would say is that didn't matter. The tone was, you know, we have some work to do on the state budget, and not just, they have, they have money on the bottom line this year, but they're, they just received the February forecast last week. It is showing some deficit in both of the, they do two cycles out. And so what I would say is, it was a very somber tone in terms of that. And again, when you hear a committee chair saying, we would be satisfied with a zero target, I think that that tells you something as to where they're at. So, and this is a really important year, obviously, because it's a budgeting year, so they have to set the budget. It's, there, there is no help, in my, the way I read it, and Amy, I'd like to hear you, because you were there with us, I just, I think we should not be counting on any, anything above the inflationary increase from St. Paul. And in fact, we already know, the, you know, part of the governor's budget is for reduced special education transportation by 5% next year, and 5% the next year. So talking $165,000 or $170,000 in addition, that will have to come from the general fund in the next couple of years. So Amy, again, I try to be the eternal optimist, and that might, that actually might be the optimistic outlook right now.
So a few things to add to that. With the people we talked to, there was a really mixed reaction about scaling back on some of the mandates from two years ago. So I get the sense, maybe that might happen a little bit, but some people were very much against it, some people weren't. Some, the two in particular were the family leave one, and then also the unemployment, or the, yeah.
Employment insurance.
Yeah, unemployment insurance. So maybe a little bit of change in that front. I think there's also some somberness at the Capitol, just not knowing what's going to be affected at the state level because of all of the things that are happening at the national level. So they're sort of waiting to see what other pieces they might have to pick up if the state stops funding things. So even more somber than what you're saying.
Ben?
And when you said zero on the budget, then there's obviously the inflationary piece. Do we have a sense, is that still, are we thinking 2.4, or what is?
The, we did get the commissioner of education's required by the end of February every year to set that inflationary factor, and it's going to be 2.74%.
2.74.
So the, the bottom line is that would increase our revenue projections by just under $100,000. But at the same time, we also have the special education transportation reimbursement decline, right, from 100% to 95%, and then 90%. And then also, we just recently learned, and I've shared this with board members before, that we also learned that they didn't allocate enough money for this year's special education payments. And so we're going to get a prorated amount of 95%. That's actually quite significant for the district. If Val wants to share the number, she can. But it's quite significant.
$525,000.
So that's revenue we had projected we would get for this year that we won't. We, in talking with Kathy Erickson today from the Department of Education, this has happened before, but typically what has happened is that there's been a bill that has been part of the education budget to make that whole, if you will. And there's just some, they felt they needed to share that directly with people earlier in the session because of the concerns that they have about the state budget getting done by the statutory deadline.
So Val, you said, so that's, we'll just break it down, the five, 95% in that special education transportation specifically? No, what was?
There's two different pieces.
Two different, yeah.
Special and the transportation.
Yep. So the transportation is one component of the overall special ed formula. So the 95% is roughly $85,000, I think is, is that the number I sent you, $85,000? So then if it goes to 10, it's about $170,000 annually that we would not be receiving, that we currently are. And then the 95% proration is on the full formula. So whatever revenue we were calculated to receive, we're getting 95% of, and that's a $525,000 difference.
And the difference is, the, the transportation is a proposal, right, that's in the governor's budget. The proration is something we're dealing with right here and now, because the legislature did not allocate enough money, or as much money as districts generated in reimbursement. So that's why they have to prorate, because they have a hard stop of how much money they can spend based on their legislative authority. It usually gets cleaned up, you know, during the session. Obviously, this is a different session. So one is proposed, one is for sure.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
And maybe just for clarification, Dr. Hillman, and please correct me if I get this wrong, but you're referencing 0% for budget increases or reductions. Because there's dozens of committees, some committees will be told they have to spend less money or the same money. Education, Minnesota is one of two things constitutionally that has to be funded by the state. And then two years ago in the last biennium, it was passed into law that funding would increase every cycle by a floor of 2% or a ceiling of 3% or somewhere between there. Is that fair to say?
Yep, so there's the inflationary increase that is baked into the projections now, so that, no one has to pass that, that's just part of the mix. What they're talking about is what is the, what are the new monies essentially that these, uh, committees are able to achieve a target? So every year, each committee gets a target, the education committee usually is one, the finance committee is usually one of the largest targets. So it is possible there are target, you know, there, some, uh, committees could get a small target of new money for them to be able to allocate. Some might get zero and there are some committees that the leadership, um, would say they need to reduce their overall, what their overall current budget is, their current budgeted spending for next year would be.
Thank you for that, uh, good discussion so far, Jeff, question?
What percentage is the, um, interest, um, addition? You said inflation, I mean, what does that end up being, so?
So they, the, the commissioner of education set that recently as two, they're going to add 2.74% to the formula. As, as Corey said, it's, the statute says it's a floor of two and it's a ceiling of three. They use, I'm going to have Val help me, there's a, it's, I think it's the December, there's a particular date where that CPI is used as the driver for what the commissioner sets, but the commissioner has the authority to set it between two and 3%, 2.74% is what's going to be the inflationary factor for next year.
That's automatically, as you say, baked into the cake, so would, would you consider that an increase? I mean, that's.
It is an increase, yep, for sure.
Of course.
It's just that they're not going to have, the, the targets might be smaller, but of the typical legislative session.
Any other questions for tonight on this topic?
I really appreciate the discussion tonight and there's going to be more coming down the road, there's a number of things, um, that we really want people to, to take a look at in the, um, budget reduction proposals and, and give us some feedback, we want to hear from people and hear how they would affect them.
All right, thank you, board members, we're going to move to item B now, district committees update. As you know, we are, have now performed or not performed, but have had two community-wide committee meeting nights, which I think has been pretty well-attended and overall positive, but Dr. Hillman's going to review kind of that process and kind of how it's been going so far.
Yeah, I just want to give a very basic update that we, again, tried these all district, uh, committee meetings this year. Part of that was to be able to cross-pollinate ideas between committees as people had a chance to visit before and after. It was also really about efficiency, we also know that trying to reduce the number of times we expected those committees to meet, we were hoping to have better and more consistent attendance. So in the packet, I just gave the agenda from the March 3rd session, uh, we are surveying people afterwards and so, so far we've had 10 respondents. And all respondents so far have, um, you know, given positive reviews in terms of, you know, questioning, was the advisory committee well organized? We've had a hundred percent giving that a three or a four on a four-point scale. Um, I learned something about the district strategic plan, again, a hundred percent, gave that a three or four on a four-point scale so far. Um, same thing with the committee being a good use of their time. And so, um, again, each committee met and I, if, if there are board members who attend any of those, if you, anybody wants to give, you know, just some analysis or, you know, share a few things about what you, uh, experienced, what I'd like to know is also, this was something that we tried differently this year, we would have all of these committees on different dates in the past. And it seems to be just a little bit more streamlined when we do it this way, we, we did two meetings this year. Um, that, that may be enough for some committees, maybe not enough for others, there are some committees that do meet beyond those two times, but since board members were involved in both of those committees, I'd also welcome any feedback that you have, we have from folks, we did get some, we did make some changes to the schedule between the first session and the second session based on some feedback. Um, we think that it was successful, we likely want to add one more meeting, I think that that's something that would be welcomed based on the feedback that we've gotten, but I'm also just curious, board members perspective, these are advisory committees, they're intended, so board members have a chance to hear from members of the public, you know, about how they're thinking about a particular topic, we don't give people homework, there's no jobs, that helps people coming back, because sometimes if we give homework, people stop showing up. But we just, of course, certainly want to hear what board members' thoughts were about the process and anything that you'd like us to think about as we start working on that for next year.
Well, first off, I owe you an evaluation, I would encourage other board members to also do that if you haven't done that.
Yep.
Beef up those numbers a little bit. Uh, I also know, know that we all had new assignments this past time, so I'd be curious to hear from folks just how the, you know, going to a new session, meeting new people, then obviously having a new topic also went, so. Anyone want to jump in, share their thoughts about their experience? Jenny?
Thanks, Corey. Um, I really appreciated the format, um, first and foremost, I guess, because, um, you could see, uh, all the members of the community, um, on that one night come together and, I mean, what else can you ask for? Um, for everyone to be able to see, even though they're in separate committees, as we break off into separate rooms, they do meet up all in one room together and so you could see people looking around, you know, if, especially when they recognized, um, which a lot of people did recognize others, um, that were in other committees and maybe they would have had no idea, um, that those folks are in, also involved. Um, and it gives them a chance just to, to take a look and see who is, um, participating. And also too, to, um, give them a chance to see the sheer numbers of people involved from our community and maybe gets them thinking, you know, I, I should call, you know, some of my friends and see if they, you know, want to be on some of those committees, um, for, in, next year or, um, even now. And then I also just wanted to, um, so, so I was part of the career and technical education committee that night and I just wanted to make a couple of quick notes. We reviewed, uh, career and technical education enrollment data, um, that night and although, um, unfortunately, as we know, high school enrollment itself is decreasing, um, I think by 37 students. Career and technical education, high school student enrollment, um, increased by a hundred and eighty-eight students this year, um, in comparison with last year. Uh, so that's a huge increase, um, that, I saw that as really promising. Um, it could help us, um, plan for the future in creating more courses possibly in those areas. Um, and then that got us to talking about, um, some of our CTE staff, um, and their assignments and sections. And then also, we talked about work-based learning, which I know is, is, we're probably going to talk about that later. But that is something that we talked about as a committee as well and received a lot of information and input from, so in our committee, we had parents, uh, community members, business owners and teachers, so, I mean, I think we kind of covered it all. And we heard feedback from everyone, uh, for that topic as well, so it was fantastic and I, I can't, I, I kind of wish that they, we had them more often, but um, maybe that's something too that we can think about in the future.
Thanks, Jenny, anyone else? Jeff?
Yeah, facilities and Justin, our facilities leader, basically just went over a list of each building and kind of, you know, what, what's going on there, not a lot of, uh, um, just some general maintenance and things, nothing really earth-shattering, uh, obviously we have the big things going on in the future here with the high school, but the one, the one thing that I, I thought was real interesting is the potential to get, um, a really good deal on some light bulbs from, uh, Excel, that's some program coming up, but, uh, looked like really an advantageous price, so, uh, we'll learn more about that in the future, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Maggie?
Um, so I joined the communications committee, um, and it was run by Erin Bailey, our community education director, she did a great job. Um, and I was really impressed, um, with all of the people who participated, um, I think you're right, having no homework was great, but people came with ideas and thoughts and so that was, uh, that was just really neat to see. We talked about, um, you know, just what people are hearing, what messages they've been getting around the budget reductions, around the, um, uh, high school, uh, reimagine project, um, so that was really helpful and I would say that, um, we spent a quite, a long time talking about how we can, um, have communications, have the website and maybe other materials, um, ready for people who might be considering the district in, in light of declining enrollment, you know, we want to have every, all of our communications, um, welcoming to families who might be thinking about coming and how can we, um, tell the stories of the district in ways that are, uh, enticing to people to, to come to the Northfield School District, so it was a really great, really great opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ben?
Of course, and then thanks to Val for facilitating the finance committee, that was a good discussion, you know, we had a chance to go through the 80-plus items that we previewed on tonight's agenda, you know, I think that was helpful to go through really line by line with the participants, there are some very thoughtful questions and just a good QA QC check too in terms of getting it road-ready, so that was appreciated, um, in time, certainly time well spent for me anyways.
Thank you. Dr. Hillman, uh, Jenny had mentioned the number of people involved, can you just tell the folks, we know we have, um, a really involved community, whether it be with the school district, the city, nonprofits, other areas, but we know we have a lot of people involved in these committees, how many people were in?
Yeah, I, I believe the rosters, uh, not, not having them informed, I believe the rosters are more than 80 people, we'd have to, I can certainly get you a full number. Um, we, we don't necessarily take attendance at each one, right, but we know that there were, there were certainly, I would say, estimate 65-plus people there, does that seem like a fair estimate to people, I mean, so I think we have typically like 80 or 80, say it again? Yeah, so we have 84, 85 people on that list and, you know, we had, we had a number of people who said, oh, can't make it tonight, sick, you know, or had something out of town, but again, as you saw the visual, as Jenny pointed out, you know, a lot of great participation.
Yeah, and for those listening or who are here, I want to put a number to it because you can't visualize it quite and it really is powerful to see our community come together in that space and I found myself energized by that, because these are all committees that already existed, but we met at four o'clock or 5:30 in our corner of the district and seeing everyone come together as a community to work on things, I think is very powerful, so, thanks for bringing that up Jenny initially. Um, I have joined the equity advocacy committee and Becca Bing at the high school led that conversation and it was really, uh, raw and authentic and very healthy conversation, um, like Jenny mentioned, there's a variety of stakeholders there from staff and community members and teachers, um, and I too feel like there's opportunity for more meetings, but have to remind myself, this is an advisory committee, we need to let the district take this, you know, advice and run with it, but, uh, talked about a lot of good things that have been happening, certainly some challenge areas that can be worked on. Uh, but I felt very good about that conversation and certainly in light of where we are in today's world, I feel like a committee like that is going to serve, uh, incredible importance in our community moving forward, so I would certainly invite more opportunities to meet before, I think October is the next scheduled committee meetings for most of these groups.
We haven't scheduled next year's yet, where we were looking at that same kind of approach, but potentially adding a third one, a third evening meeting next year, so. We're still, we wanted to know what people thought before we developed this, and I just looked at the list, 83 people, um, you know, were part of those committees.
Very good. All right, we will move ahead to item C, which is policy committee rec- uh, recommendations, we had a number of policies. Superintendent Hillman will present the policy committee's recommendations, uh, recommended changes, excuse me, policies 411, 412, 415, 417, 423 and 903, uh, hopefully everyone had a chance to read them, they're all pretty minor, but we'll let Dr. Hillman explain them.
Yeah, I, I think the way that I'll, I'll go about this is that, um, there are a number of policies that the committee is bringing forward. I would argue that there are, uh, very few, if any, major changes, mostly some phrasing, there's some statutory references, a handful of other, there's, you know, in the, in the expense reimbursement, one, it really specifically talks about the kind of receipts that you have to have, you know, that kind of thing, so I would just open it for any questions on any of these policies that are coming forward tonight, rather than going, um, policy by policy.
Think that's appropriate, any questions from board members? Amy?
I have a question on policy 412 and it's really the procedures for it, um, and that's, um, I'm wondering when the meal expense total was last considered, uh, you know, I think $50 a day in the current uh, in, uh, environment, doesn't get you much more than fast food if you're paying for three meals with it, and I'm just wondering how that gets reviewed and also tipping at 15%? Um, I think tip levels have gone up a little bit and if they get that screen, often the lowest tip you're, option you're given, um, is 18% these days, so.
Sure, so, um, I would say these rates have been set for, for quite a while. We also do not have a large number of people accessing this. Um, most of the people who are going to training, it's, they're driving for the day, lunch is included, um, and so I would say this is very infrequently used. Um, and a lot of times, if they are going for an overnight, it's something where their organization is providing food as part of the fee. Um, so I have not had any, um, any complaints about this, there are often people who will tip extra on purpose, um, but then that we just reimburse them the 15%. So I don't have concerns about it at this point, just because it's really infrequently used, um, but certainly if people, um, that's helpful. Got concerns, we would certainly take it into, into consideration, but it's pretty infrequent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions on policies? Okay, these will be part of our action items at our next meeting on April 14, I believe it is. All right, we'll now move to the approval of the consent agenda, as a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping as well as one action item, which will come later. Uh, is there a motion, or I'm sorry, is there anyone who would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Jeff?
I'd like to take a closer look at, is it 6C under 522?
It's not on this sheet, hold on a second. Is that the handbook? Okay, so moving 6C to make it 7B, is that correct? Because we have 7A now? So 7B, okay. And that's a motion, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to move ahead with consent agenda and pull item 6C, make it 7B to be discussed later. All those in favors, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Say none, we will move ahead. All right, let me get back over here, so now we're up to items for individual actions, 7, 1, uh, oh, that's what we just did, we just removed the one item as an action item. Yeah, that's what we just did, that's what we, happened last time and I.
Did you get that vote?
Yeah, so we approved the consent, in the same motion.
Okay, I was thinking we're doing.
We approved the consent agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, so we have one item to take, or two items now, but the first action item is 2026, 2028 Achievement and Integration Plan, this came today in the table file. Uh, the board is asked to approve the 26, 28 Achievement and Integration Plan. The Achievement and Integration Program was established to increase racial and economic integration of students and to increase student academic achievement by reducing academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic and economic backgrounds. We have Hope Langston here to share some information, but Dr. Hillman, I don't know if you had anything to add beforehand? Okay.
So thanks, Corey, because you just read my opening line.
Oh, you're welcome.
What is achievement and integration? So this will be our third three-year plan. Um, we first received A&amp;I money back, um, in 2019, we developed our plan, but that was for fiscal year 20 through 22. Um, for the first time this year, uh, we are considered a racially isolated district. Um, that kind of surprised me, so I, uh, talked to MD about that. Um, it basically, that determination is made if our class of protected students, which are, uh, non-white students is 20 percent, percentage points higher than any one of our adjoining districts. So if you think about every district that adjoins Northfield, um, and the reason why we are racially isolated this year is because we are 20.7% um, greater than Randolph in our protected class students, so that was a new, um, designation for us. Um, we pulled together a team to come up with the goals that are required for achievement and integration. You got the very full report, 22 pages, I think, um, but in a nutshell, we have to have student achievement goals, we have to have teacher equity and effectiveness goal, and we have to have a racial and economic integration goal, those are required. Uh, we have to have strategies for each goal and we have to have, um, key indicators of performance for each of the strategies. So the team came together, um, the process was a little bit delayed this year because we wanted to see the impact of the budget, um, reduction recommendations on both AdSIS. of the budget reduction recommendations on both AdSIS and Achievement Integration and Integration. So I apologize for getting this to you at a later time than we typically would have. It is, it is due this Friday, so we're in good shape there. But you can see the, the goals that we have written for this year. We are reducing the gap between non-FRP students and FRP students who are credit deficient or not on track for graduation. We are reducing the percentage of kindergarten students who have characteristics, moderate or significant characteristics of dyslexia over the three years. Our teacher effectiveness will be coaching tier-one teachers or core content teachers in strategies they can use to make more students more successful in the, in the tier-one classroom. And then we will continue our Data Summits, which we started in 2019. Those have been a really effective way to bring four districts together. About 20 students per district to look at data that is common to all of the districts. So those are the goals. Again, this year, we're looking at a budget amount of an anticipated $354,000 and change. So we submit this and then we go on our way. We, we actually did really well on our goals in the last three-year plan. So we, we took the input from the team to develop these new goals and strategies.
All right, thank you Hope.
Yep.
Any questions from board members? Jenny?
Thanks Cory. So in previous years, that, so we, so we had to fill out this plan for the last three sessions?
So you, you apply every three years, right? You develop a new plan every three years, you report on the goals in your plan annually?
Okay. And but so in previous years, we were, we were identified or classified as just an adjoining, a racially adjoining school?
Yes.
And now we're, and now that's gone and we're racially identifiable instead of the adjoining.
Right. In the last two plans, we qualified because we adjoined Faribault, who is considered a racially isolated district. This year, we are considered racially isolated. That could change next year. They reconfigure that every year.
And, and what parameters do they use for reconfiguring that annually?
Same thing, 20 percentage points higher in your protected student class.
And that's the same percentage year to year, no matter what?
So far, that, that's what it's been, yeah. 20 percentage points.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Just have a question about the 20% racial isolation. Since we were adjoining Faribault last couple of years and now we are identifying this, is there a geographic piece in this, in terms of isolation, or is it really just about the percentage? Because I'm thinking if Farmington and Lakeville, Apple Valley, all the way up to the cities, at what point are you no longer isolated, you're just an extension?
Well, that's an interesting question. So it really is about comparing you to any district that physically abuts your district, right? So we have one thing that could change with our designation as racially isolated. We now have more districts we could partner with in an integration activity. We are not going to do that this year, just because they've already started the planning phases for our student integrate, our student data summit. So we will continue to partner with Waterville Elysian, Tri-City, and Faribault.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, I will move to approve the 2026-28 Achievement Integration Plan, which will bring approximately $354,000 in funding for this program. Do I have a second? Maggie? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, thanked.
All right, and we did pull one item from the Consent Agenda, so we'll move on to 7B. This is, the request in front of us is for the Board to approve the updated students, citizen, citizens, it's always a tough word, Student Citizenship Handbook with a couple of updates for alignment with recent changes to the Federal Title IX Program. If you recall our last board meeting, we did make some updates to the policies and Jenny had requested some additional changes with the handbook and some other pieces. Dr. Hillman and administrators have addressed that in this, this is why it wasn't a Consent Agenda, but we do have a question. So first, we need a motion to approve, and then we'll take a second for discussion. Is there a motion to approve? Jeff, motion, do you have a second? Amy? Okay. Jeff, you pulled this, do you have comments or questions?
Yeah, I just kind of more of a pointed information. I just wanted maybe Matt to explain that a little bit more. There's a lot of moving parts with Title IX and other issues with state versus federal. And one thing we've never, ever really brought up, even in my time, is that, you know, what is the personal liability of board members if they may or may not be open to lawsuits? So I don't know, I just, I just kind of looked at that and I thought, I just needed a better explanation. And I don't know where my, other than that, just kind of wanted to have you talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, so the, when we passed the reverted Title IX policy at the last meeting, what we did is we, there were some requests to go and look at the alignment of some other documents. So for example, if you take a look at the reporting forms on our website, we had been using a singular report form that covered both Title IX complaints and harassment complaints. And the language was unified between the two of those. When we reverted back to the Title IX policy that was from 2022 essentially, those introductory language items changed. So we now have separate forms for each complaint forms for Title IX and harassment violations. In the Student Citizenship Handbook, what we looked at is we probably actually should have also listed the Minnesota Human Rights Act as a statutory reference, if you will, under nondiscrimination. So when we went back to look at the impact of that Title IX component, that Title IX change on the Student Citizenship Handbook, it really came under that section in Rights and Responsibilities on nondiscrimination. And so the language from that nondiscrimination, when the Title IX policy was, when we, the Title IX policy that we just went away from, had very similar language to the Minnesota Human Rights Act. We should have had both references there before. But as we looked at it, the Title IX reference no longer made sense, it was no longer valid. So adding the Minnesota Human Rights Act there was the appropriate piece. And I think the question there, this stems from, we talked about the lawsuit that was settled by a district court in Kentucky, a federal court in Kentucky, that vacated the 2024 Title IX rules. And so schools in Minnesota, there are some questions about some executive orders and some things that have come from Washington. And looking at the differentiation between executive orders, right, and what the State Human Rights Act says. And so I do think that there's going to be continued discussion of, we have an Attorney General's opinion on this as well. And I do think you're going to see some additional discussion and clarification in the courts coming down the line. So the Title IX, vacating the Title IX, that took that out of the, that part of the nondiscrimination piece and just changed the reference to the Minnesota Human Rights Act. Is that helpful Jeff?
Yes, I mean, I'm just, you know, with the state law and federal law, so you're comfortable that we're conforming with federal law.
I, as of right now, based on the legal information that has been presented to me, yes.
All right, any questions?
Could change, but I feel as of today, that's, we are on the right spot.
We'll monitor as it moves out.
You got it.
Any questions? Jenny?
Okay, so now, Dr. Hillman, that you bring up that there's two separate report forms. I see that one, two were created instead of just using one to combine. So then which report form would students use for discrimination or offenses or violations?
So they would, they could use either one, right, depending on the circumstance. I would think that frankly, more often than not, the harassment report form probably covers a larger variety of potential incidents, because the Title IX reports has, the, the scope of that has shrunk. So I would see that there would likely be less use of the Title IX report. And if someone were to file a harassment report, we are trained to see is there also a Title IX issue there? And if there's also a Title IX issue there, then we would also execute any of the procedures that are appropriate under Title IX. I would say the vast majority of complaints would probably come through the harassment form just because of the scope that that covers versus what the smaller scope of Title IX now would be compared to what it had been before.
If that's the case, I would suggest putting, adding discrimination then as an offense under the report form for harassment and violence, because harassment and violence is very separate from discrimination. They're all separate crimes, separate violations, separate offenses. And so otherwise, you're going to go back to having conflict. So if you're telling me that students are most likely going to avoid the discrimination report form for discrimination and go over to the harassment and violence report form, then I would say you legally, you definitely would need discrimination under that report form instead of just harassment and violence, you would have to add discrimination.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at that and, and see what we can do. We want to make, create the, as clean as we can, right, within what the requirements are. So it isn't an attempt, you know, to try to make it difficult, it was just trying to separate it out based upon the feedback that we had had before. So we can certainly take another look at it and see if there's another way to adjust that so that it's really clear. But I will have to take a look at it and we can discuss with our school district attorney as well as what the right methodology of creating those report forms are.
Yes, thank you.
So the handbook comes back to us as an extension of policy, but the reporting forms, are those traditionally come through the Board? Or are those handled administratively?
Correct. The reporting forms are procedural in nature, and so we of course take feedback on all of that from the Board, and then we would execute it in the way, just like we did the last time. We didn't bring those forms back to you because those, we, we took the direction and we adjusted those report forms to align with the policy change. And that's the exact same thing we would do with this, is we look through what is the appropriate methodology for creating that avenue for complaint.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm okay moving ahead with this tonight, I know we have another question over here, but, and then having the administration follow up with that, maybe directly with you or other board members.
That's, that's all I was going to say, we can table that and you can come back to the Board later.
And one of your superintendent check-ins or an email, maybe you can connect on that piece. Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay, we have none. Motion carries. All right, we are going to move on to items for information, let me switch gears here, sorry. And the first up is Superintendent's Report for Focus Area Number, Update Number Two. Superintendent Hillman provided a written statement, or a written report rather, in the items for information for us to review. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Hillman on this most recent update? Okay, we'll move ahead to Item B for items for information related to the construction update number seven. Dr. Hillman will provide an update on where we are with the construction project.
I, I will just leave the report stand. If board members have any questions, we are, just the one piece that's new is the geothermal test wells. We're getting that to be able to move ahead. So that was included in the report, but otherwise, we're working through the core planning team and the activities subcommittees, they meet again this week.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Hillman? Okay. And then finally, we have the Enrollment Report, the March 2025 Enrollment Report, so pretty fresh.
So we don't usually see a ton of changes this time of year, but you'll see that, you know, our full-time only students increased by five over the last month. And again, you see, we see some modest changes once we get into the cruising altitude of the school year. So, you know, we are right at 3,700 as of the last enrollment report. And then as we talked a little bit, as you know, every month, I show what the class sizes look like. So these are the current elementary school class sizes. And we just make sure that we have committed to showing those each month. So I'd be happy to answer any questions I can about the enrollment report at this time.
Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Hillman? All right, saying none, we'll go to future meetings. As a reminder, our meeting for tomorrow was moved to April 3. It will be at the middle school instead of the high school, and that starts at 6:00 PM. It's a two and a half hour meeting that I think all of us are probably looking forward to hearing from our constituents and stakeholders and students and families and staff. And looking forward to that engagement. Following that, our next regular board meeting is April 14, Monday at 6:00 PM in this office. After that, April 28, 6:00 PM, regular board meeting in the Northfield District Office Boardroom. And then finally, already looking ahead to May, which seems pretty wild, but May 12, 6:00 PM, District Office Boardroom. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, Jeffrey? Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second from Jenny. Sorry, blank there. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We are adjourned.